All right. We have the signal because we are transmitting, so I'd like to welcome everyone. This is a historic moment. This is our first post-COVID meeting with no mask mandates back in this room. So I'd like to invite Pastor Brian James up to speak. And I guess I'll have to let him know that he's really sure.
You know, it's such a blessing being a community led by men that want to pray and that we have the right to pray and so far, and it's just an honor to do that. So thank you. We appreciate you. Almighty God, we come before you today, Lord, and we just praise you for who you are, the Eternal One, the self-existent one, the King of Kings. And we thank you for what you've done, making a way for us through this world, through your Son, Jesus Christ. And God, I lift up this meeting today, I lift up these men, and I pray for them, their marriages, their families, our community, all of the first responders, all of the soldiers from out of our community, where there's so much going on. And I just pray you can give these guys discernment and wisdom as matters of the day come before them, or just as you guided through your hand with the light of providence, our family fathers still may be guiding these men as they make decisions now that will affect our county for many generations to come. We thank you for the freedom we have to do this. We thank you for the laws that we have to protect us. And Lord, you oversee all of it, and you're always with us, you never leave, so we'd say this, so we thank you for that in Jesus' name we pray. Amen? Thank you.
If you could join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. I'm appreciative. Thank you. All right. The time is number nine over three. Amanda, if you could hold the role, please.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Pettit?
Here.
All right. The first item we had is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the agenda as presented.
I'll say it.
I have a motion in seconds to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. First item of business is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion in seconds to approve consent as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Lieutenant Officer Scott reports. Sheriff, do you have any questions? Can Sam be given some?
Just, I've got one question, as it is in our June, this is our first meeting in June, and I want to ask the kickoff of the 2022 budget cycle. We are going now, yeah, like, we've talked about it earlier, now we're working in three fiscal years, right? We finished up the audit from last year. We are currently in the current budget year, and then now we're looking at 2022. So we will be getting messages out to all the elected officials, all the department managers with their year-end numbers as soon as we can, year-end of 2020 numbers and year-to-date numbers for 2021. We're also taking a harder look at the revenue side to start with, see kind of where we may end up as far as spending. We know we've got some other funds coming in from the federal government. I'll talk about those a little bit later. But now's the time for all the department heads and elected officials to really start planning if they have any big projects, get some scilling on those. And our goal this year is to tie budget priorities to both the strategic plan and the 2022 commissioners' budget goals. And that'll be in that guidance email that goes out every single. So stay tuned. It's going to come down October 15th. It's going to be pretty busy. October 15th is the statutory deadline for submitting a grant budget to the commissioners.
Any questions? Thank you, Chairman. All right, we'll move on to open public comment. This is a chance for anybody to speak on a topic that isn't under discussion or for action today, but we'll call for a public comment on those items specifically. So understanding, Amanda, we had nobody that submitted a public comment to you prior or asked or recalled during the meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, has anybody in the room that has any general comments? Andres, if you'd like to just introduce yourself, it'd be nice for folks here.
Commissioner, yes, my name is Andres. I work for Senate.
If you could come up to the podium, just so you're captured for the live show.
I'm so new with this. I'm so new.
That's okay.
It's very nice to address this chamber, and we feel the honor of inviting you here. My name is Andres. I'm here with Senator Hagan Looper's office. You know, I'm here to help Elbert County as much as humanly possible, and to be as helpful as possible to all the folks here. You know, I have a huge heart for the 26,000 residents of Elbert County. You know, I have an ag background. My grandfather to this day still, you know, raises and trains horses. He's like 80 years old, so more than he can raise a horse, and so he's very proud of the fact that I can come here and represent his Senate office against the benefit of the ag community here. So again, just thank you so much for having me. You know, be a student, and you're going to be learning a lot about Elbert County. You'll receive me a lot. So thank you very much.
Thank you much. With that saying, another, I'll propose a public comment at this time and move on to discussion items. First was a draft resolution regarding special event kicker permits that provides a little change to how we do business, which should streamline things for the community. Do you have some on this?
Yeah, I can, I'm part career county attorney. I can provide a little bit of elaboration on that. For special events, we typically have to involve state within decisions on one-time or sporadic liquor permits. This resolution would allow us to have a little more autonomy as a county in making that particular decision on special events and involving the state only on a tertiary basis really out of effect. Certainly not as much required permission from the state at this point as a basis of this resolution. And so I would recommend approval of this resolution. I think it will streamline things for residents of the county who want to have these special events, but also for the corporate offices.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've read the thing. It looks good to me. I think that we should take, move from discussion items to action items.
I'll say it. Okay, we have a motion actually with this item to action today.
Yeah.
Yeah, as Art said, actually, this is a little more autonomous for the county than every area, but the county can act independently and not involve the state generally better for our citizens. So do you have any public comments on this? See, you know, we've got a motion before us to take this resolution to action and approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. In a general way, we don't want to action on items that first one off for special events. Very easy one, with the people on the first. The second one, I'd like to leave the discussion on, so discuss a possible resolution or proclamation regarding the protection of constitutional rights of citizens. This has been a topic that, you know, regularly comes before us in regard to state actions that have been taken. You know, back in 2018, I think most people recall the issues surrounding the red flag laws that were, that was proposed and signed into, later signed into law. I know our sheriff has stood against that as well as many throughout the state who are one of fairly soundly counties that passed a resolution declaring ourselves a second amendment sanctuary, confirmed our sheriff as a senior constitutional officer, and hardly using taxpayer money to implement it, so maybe this, somebody was going to take a weapon, and there hadn't been a crime, or it's not evidence of crime, you shouldn't use taxpayer money for it, and it had been slower. And that's just continued when COVID really brought things to focus. In 2020, we issued one of our few public health orders, and that was to recognize that churches and worship were essential in our community. They should remain open. That was countered what the mandate from the state was at the time, but we were about a month and a half ahead of Supreme Court in terms of decisions they made again, that worship should not be interfered with, and the issue to others along the way that were really focused on ensuring people's rights to the sample. We had martial graduations that were supported by a few voters. Again, another proclamation in regard to the meat-out date that the nuclear senators and representatives were very eloquent with about the importance of agriculture out here. Unfortunately, it's not always recognized to the state. The issue of proclamation supporting our producers designated any activities in regard to supporting that would really be protected from the speech. There was a tremendous event, which was in Elizabeth, about 1,500 people showed up to support the agriculture. A tremendous, and then we kind of find ourselves here, May of 2021, or June now. Generally, May legislative session ends, but this time it drove into June. I don't know if there's a common saying, people's rights are never more endangered when the legislature is in session. That's proven to be true again. Several bills pending on the governor's desk that I think will be challenged in court, several related to possession of firearms. There's certainly the funding bill that was asked to support bringing in revenue to CDO for road and bridge repairs across the state. Definitely running some needed revenue, but it really wasn't run around paper. We've established some gasoline fees versus gasoline taxes, but they're collected in the same way, they're going to be distributed in the same way, but they've been called a fee versus a tax, so they didn't have to go to the state. Last November, the people of the state voted on, they put this proposition 117, that the state set up any enterprise funds over a certain size without also voting to the people for a vote. This funding bill for CDO in order to get around the cap on size for new enterprises, just created four new enterprises that were slightly smaller than the cap. So we do have a legislature, for whatever reason, seems to be damned on just plodding forward and doing what they want regardless of what the people of the state have said or what the Constitution of the state says or constitution of our country. So this is something that all three of us take seriously, and we take action on these specific incidents, incidents, and we can take our oath seriously. But we have been requested to look at some sort of document, whether it's a proclamation or a resolution, or some statement of policy that ensures that citizens of our county that they do live in a place where their rights and dreams are protected. And we're still examining that, and received some information. There's a couple of counties throughout the country that have declared themselves constitutional counties. The title's always interesting, but we kind of have to dig into the details of what that means. Every state's constitution is slightly different, so what they're saying may not be directly applicable here, but it's a good concept to look at. I know there's some municipalities in the state that have made declarations as well. Again, there's some differences between municipalities and counties in terms of authorities with a different theme that we're all interested in, is ensuring that the right thing is being done for our citizens, and they have the opportunity to live in a place that they choose to. I'm stopped there, but kind of amplifies the summary for this session, is something that I have heard.
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments. One, I'm a legal immigrant and naturalized citizen and believe in the Constitution. And that goes without any large amount of words, it's just brilliant. But one of the things I'd like to compliment the three of us and some others is that, to me, actions are more important than words. What Chris has summarized here is what we have done, and each one of those things supports the Constitution, and it also supports individual rights. And if you follow what's gone on through the pandemic with us, you'll note that we have regarded people's individual rights as extraordinarily important. That's all I have to say.
You know, I know all, I know it's important for me with the Constitution stuff, because I know the first time I took an oath was in 1970, so it's been a while since I've been upholding that. You know, we have to look at the rules and that that we're under as, you know, part of the, you know, part of the state, you know, all our powers and everything are granted by the state. We need to take that into consideration, but we also need to make sure that they don't walk over the constitutional rights that we have. So, I mean, that's my biggest thing, is looking at, like Grant said, making sure that if we do take action, that what we put in proclamation or declaration really has something that we can fall back on as opposed to just doing words.
Any public comments at this time? Maggie, if you'd like, just need your name and address for the record, and we've got three minutes. You can swap for three hours on that topic.
Maggie Witherby, my address is 44447 Homestead Road, here in Elbert County. And first of all, I want to say to all of you, in the last 14 or 15 months, we really appreciate what you have done, and you have stood tall, and you have protected individual rights, and you have taken action in advance of other counties taking similar types of actions. And I want to say, we understand that, and we appreciate that, because that's sort of what we expect from you, and you actually have done that, so we're appreciative of that. I think the COVID-19 situation has pricked us out quickly. Rights and liberties that we have can be usurped almost overnight, and they come down through dictates and mandates and things that don't come down through the legislature. They're coming down through executive orders at the federal level, they're coming down through similar orders at state level. These are the, this is the, this is the slippery slope that we're on. So state or counties across not only Colorado, but taking in action and passed various resolutions, some are, I think, are pretty good and some are not, but recently Sheriff Richard Mack, who is a, he is the founder of the Constitutional Sheriff's Peace Officer Association, he's responded to several counties in the state of Nevada wanting to become constitutional counties. And I pass along some of that information to you to consider, along with the information that we already have. I think that we need to have a statement on record, and yes, it is words, but we need to have a statement on record that our government and our county supports the United States' Constitution, and supports our state constitution, and will defend it even if it's under assault by the federal government or the state government. We need to stand in the gap if that's happening, and we need to make sure that we protect our citizens by doing so. So I know that a resolution might be just words on a piece of paper, but to a lot of the citizens of this county that makes a big difference to know that the three of you and everyone else in the county government is solidly behind our Constitution. And I think this is what this is all about. And I feel confident that in working with all of you, that we can find a set of words that we can put on a piece of paper and that would state what we believe firmly. So I think that's all I have to say this morning. I know that we'll be back again and be talking about this again. So, and thank you for everything you've done and everything you will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maggie. Yeah. And I know we've just had a lot of discussions, folks. So folks, we're focused very much on the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and sometimes it overlooks the Ninth and Tenth Amendment that talks to powers not granted to the government, and those that remain with the state and the people, and the people of the state have granted certain powers. The state, that's what it is, the Constitution, and then there's others that are not federal companies. Kind of all in that line of making sure we're covering everything. I mean, an example is generally the, you know, federal government has no state of authority to deal with education matters. That was left to the states and the people. They're in that realm, obviously, but within our state constitution, it wasn't left just to the people, it's integrated into our constitution. We're required to provide a free and equal education to everybody between the age of five and 21, to high school graduations. So there's, there's bits and pieces where folks are sometimes unfamiliar with all the documents that impact their rights and freedoms, but we'll keep digging into that. Folks, anyone who's recently arrived, we've done our open public comment. I'm not sure if you had a specific item you wanted to do. Yeah, please.
First, I apologize for being late. Last time we held it, it was over at that fairground. By the time we found something, tell us what was that. I'm just wondering why.
Sir, if you're going to speak, we know your name and.
Oh, that's our address, 5734, 55, Elizabeth. Thank you. I'm just wondering why we need to put all this stuff in writing instead of just saying we refuse to enforce any unconstitutional law, you know, that the state or the government tries to put on us. I mean, the county, we have county chairs, we have county attorney, we have all the county stuff, the judges and the attorneys and everything. Why can't they just refuse to prosecute anything that's unconstitutional? Why is that people who pay the work saying, you know, the county's, you know, stands this way? It seems like it just makes one sentence. We will not prosecute any unconstitutional law, and then just let it stand it down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyway, I think our sheriff has very much taken that stand in terms of not enforcing things he feels to be unconstitutional. When it comes to prosecution, the district attorney doesn't work direct. I mean, he works for the people of the county and three other counties right now, but that's the district attorney's decision as to whether to charge or prosecute. So like I said, we generally put things in writing in response to very specific overreaches by the state, who will continue to do so to clarify. There's a balance between both, I believe. I mean, we can start each of our meetings by renewing ours to the Constitution, but that doesn't, that doesn't change whether we kept the oath last week or this week, but I think something in writing that provides a little bit of policy guidance is, you know, I think very useful for our authorities are generally financials. So again, if you weren't here from the time we discussed it, like the red flag law, we recognize that's, we support the sheriff's decision regarding enforcement there, but we borrowed the use of taxpayer dollars, other county resources to implement, so not a very specific thing. We can broadly say on any day that we follow the Constitution's implications of Colorado, but when the statutes are perhaps overreached, I think we have to speak on this. But thank you for coming. From now until something changes, the OCC James will be here. This is the first one we've held in this room since COVID began. Part of that was refitting with new audio visual equipment and the things that we can do to broadcast so everybody can just take the news, whether they're able to be here personally or not. But with that, are there any other comments on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
All right, it's just important that our audio is not working on video.
Okay.
And I've been in touch with IT, and I asked if we should take a break and try to troubleshoot, and he said he's not sure how to troubleshoot it right now, so we're, we've got good video, speakers are working, we're just not sure why that sound is not going to the recording. But that's where we are.
All right. Anyway, that's probably what's going on in the building over the last couple of days. That may have affected it, but I know Amanda's got the audio recording going, so it's an public meeting that people could attend. We'll post the audio separately after the meeting. Hopefully it will resolve itself. Okay. Our next discussion item, actually before we close, I would ask Sam if he could, if you could reach out to, probably CCI and NECO, and just see if they've got any information regarding declarations of constitutional counties, just to kind of see what we're doing, what other information as well. So with that, we'll move on to discussion of the American Rescue Plan status. Leave yours to them.
Commissioners, just wanted to give you an update on the status of the American Rescue Plan funding that is coming down from Treasury. We've submitted all the required documents, played all the games with that, and we have received in our account, as confirmed by the Treasurer, $2.6 million of ARP funds directly from Treasury. 2.6 is half of our total allotment, which is $5.2 million. Along with all this, and since it was done very quickly, is lots of guidance documents and lots of speculation and interpretations, not only from the state, but also from agencies we participate in, like CCI and NECO and ICMA, and also been about it some years Treasury, and it seems to be updated weekly. It's starting to solidify to a point where I think we can go out and start scouring projects for using this funding, and that's what we're getting ready to do. There's five main categories that, that these funds can be used for. One is to support the public health response. That's very similar to what we've seen with the CARES Act money, and there's actually language in there that says most things that was done with that CBRF fund. Allocation, we can also use for our ARP money. So that's what we're taking a look at. I think that's where most of our projects will fall. Address negative economic impacts. This is, again, similar to what we did previously with grants to businesses and nonprofits. We're going to continue that. We were going to use some remaining CBRF funds for that. What we're now recommending is that we go ahead and just close that fund out and start using ARP money for another round of small business grants. Our initial target will be about $200,000 out to small businesses and nonprofits in the county that had extraordinary impacts that the first couple rounds of funding didn't cover, or latecomers, or new impacts that we haven't, that weren't brought forward to our attention yet. Replace, the other category is to replace. Replace public sector, the other category is to replace public sector revenue loss. We have, there were some really fancy calculations on that. It doesn't look like at this point in time that the county will qualify for anything underneath that. Will, if you'd like some more information from finance team, we can certainly provide that. But we've anticipated additional guidance or information on how this formula is going to be tweaked. It doesn't look like it's going to be possible to use that money. Paying paid for essential workers is another category that we're taking a look at. And then a big category called water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And this includes stormwater infrastructure, and that's one thing that we're looking at a couple of projects. And the broadband infrastructure, we're starting to be calls from third-party or outside vendors that are looking also at broadband infrastructure and will provide faster upload and download speeds to the underserved populations of the county that don't currently have broadband. So those are the categories that these AARP money can be used for. That's what we will continue to do and look at our projects. Once we, I'm going to give people 30 days to get projects in. This money can be used this fiscal year and retroactively to someone especially if there was loss revenue to last year. And then we can, we'll get another $2.6 million next year. The money has to be spent or obligated by the end of 2024 for anything that's obligated into 20, has to be spent by end of '25 or end of '26. So that's kind of where we are with that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if we get real detail on accounting, I'll have to go in and grab Tony, our finance manager.
Okay. What can you comment?
The main question is, and I know we're not there yet, is prioritizing our objectives. Because we've got lots of things that we can do, and, but some of them are very important and some of them are not so important. So this prioritization of the projects will be important to me.
And I agree with you, Commissioner. One of the things we're looking at is a priority scheme that will look at the number of people served, the equivalent intent, the good for the community, how to make staff more efficient, how to make staff more, you know, and whether it's recurring money or... We classify finance into the two big categories, right? One-time spending and recurring funds. Any of those recurring type of projects, and I don't expect to see a lot of those, will have future impact years past '26 that we may need to make, you know, it may not give us much priority as a one-time thing where we, doesn't have future budget impacts, future negative budget impacts.
Just one other comment is we were at a conference recently where there was a presenter there that talked about what some of this money could be used for. And she didn't mention capital projects. If you look at that summary there, there's some definition issues there. Would a bridge count? Would something like that be, would the funds be available for something like that? And the way those items are listed, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
One way or the other.
You know, if we had been able, if we'd been able to show significant impact to revenue to the county, the projects under that category, we could have refused for almost anything the county spends money on. There was a lot more latitude in that category. When you now look at the public health response category, some of those things that are directly related to capital expenditures for public health and public safety are a possibility. If you look at the water, sewer, and broadband structure, if we're talking about stormwater management issues and stormwater management, construction projects, whether that's capital or not, that might be another way to get some capital type things done.
Yeah, just on the capital part, to me, the holdup on that was really at the state level when they were holding the purse strings. It seemed pretty clear from the federal guidance that you could use it for that. It was the state that was pushing back any type of one to spend money would actually provide an enduring benefit. And that was sort of my primary comment, because most of this money, or all of this money that's coming down doesn't really exist. It's borrowed from our state's grant. And we were putting a volume of CARES Act dollars because they had to be spent by a certain date in some of the projects that maybe were lesser importance but could be done in the timeframe we fund. Having a six-minute period to use is important to focus on things that really do have an enduring impact. As we look at the business grant piece, I'm not sure exactly how you phrase it or assess it, but unused to help businesses towards future resiliency. It may not be the, you know, government mandates to affect it next time, but recession or something else. So anything we can do to help businesses, local businesses, to get through another down cycle would be very important. Again, to me, this is, it's not our only answer, it's our grant, it's money. So we need to look at ways to some that maybe will help them out as well, not just right now. Do you have any public comment on this? No, I don't know what's interim funding that needs here at this point. Hopefully we'll get the final time of weekends. Oh, I guess the other piece would just be the, there was an allocation of special districts to states and counties. We do need to kind of keep their needs and our fire districts and others who may have pieces of this that if we need to support them. I've dubbed CCI potentially run as legislation number 22 that takes the state to some of the many billions they've ever received to support response structures.
And you're exactly right, Commissioner, and those special districts were left out. I think the intent was to let the states work that through the Department of Education or their Department of Emergency Management. I have connections with the Special District Association. I know they're pushing pretty hard right now to come up with a plan and work with the state. And so I will, I will reach out to one of their executive director and talk to her and see what her plans are, and I can provide more information later.
Thank you. All right. Next item we've got is just discussion of an IGA that was proposed in an agreement that was proposed by the state of fire. It just changes how we do some of our financial accounting for that fees.
That's right. Hart Prager County Attorney, just so the board and constituents are aware, this is something that Elder County, Carrick County, and Elkhorn Police and Fire Department have been talking about, discussions between the, in the fire department. This is what we ended up with. And really what it does is it solidifies that we have an IGA in place with the list of the fire. They are comfortable with having one of those in place. And really what this does is it memorializes the understanding that we already have that we used to collect the fees that are associated with Elizabeth Fire on behalf of Elizabeth Fire. We no longer do that. That is something that they have decided to take on themselves and therefore that kind of changes the fee structure on what they're able to capture. We used to receive 3%, obviously because we're not capturing that on their behalf. We're not doing that any longer. That is something that we planned for, and that's been something that's been in place for the entire date of 2021 at this point. This just kind of memorializes the understanding we have. So I would encourage the board to approve this.
I'm fine with that. There's no urgency, we're already doing this. Just they put on, or action in our next meeting. Any comments on this? I think same number. Public Works Maintenance Shop Requirements is the next. Those are always coming up for those of you that are in the room. I mean, right now, our maintenance shop out back was built in 1938. A lot of our equipment doesn't fit in it. A lot of our equipment can't make the turn off the coyote right off the street in Kyla to get here. It's just inadequate inside of the future. What do you have, Ray?
Mr. Murray, yeah, Public Works Director. After our discussion yesterday, I think the trend is that most public works facility can't on line. As you know, we've been trying to identify property for a potential new shop. We have identified one. This resolution is before you is, it gives us the ability to reimburse ourselves for some of the ancillary costs. And some of the costs that we're looking at in particular, and we've already expended some of these. Green study is a requirement as it is on a state highway and a traffic study. Again, this gives us the ability to reimburse ourselves, reimburse the county from the funds we're paying. Have you had any other questions or should we let the people in the back?
No, not really. For those that haven't been to every meeting or haven't reviewed all the tapes. The written raised brought us a proposal several months back, and we've had some public workshops determining the design requirements for shops that would take care of us well into the future and improve the ability to serve citizens. And most importantly, actually fits within our current revenue streams. So we have no call for additional taxes or fees or anything. It fits within our ability to construct and build within, within the monies that we already project coming out in the, within, in the future. So that's a good thing, definitely. But part of that was predicated on finding an appropriate piece of property, both location and terrain wise. Going into an executive session a bit to discuss specifically the property itself and act in acquisition. What it will allow is, you know, moving the sand and gravel piles and the space we're occupying at the northern end of the fairgrounds can be turned over for future planning, to also expand and provide facilities for the fairgrounds and recreation for our citizens. So it's kind of a win-win. But right now, what we do have is tremendously inadequate. It's not only add some risk to our employees in terms of maintenance operations, but also just slows down our ability to respond if weather changes quickly or you get rapid icing. We've got vehicles that take several hours to get prepped and out the door. You know, we're putting everybody on the roads. That risk that we could get folks out there. There's a lot of, a lot of aspects of this, of the resolution that was under discussion that was really one that will allow us to pull together all the dining costs and previous monies that were put into financing the entire projects. I'm comfortable with it.
I agree with your comments. The only thing is, again, what this does is facilitates the appropriate accounting for the thing. And I would suggest we move it to an action item for the next meeting.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this? I think same number. That was the end of our discussion items. We have a few relatively decent election items. The first one is approval of the minutes from our May 12 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, that resolution, we moved from discussion items down to action items. Do you want to, by word, do you want us to do that in the last?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. We've done that. Oh, we did, we took it to action and approved it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's just, so I'd take a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the committee 12, 20, 21 minutes in dispensive of the rating.
Second.
Yeah, motion in second to approve the May 12 minutes in dispensive rating. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the June 2 special meeting minutes. I did not attend, but I'll accept the motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the June 2, 2021 special meeting minutes as written in dispensive of the rating of those minutes.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstain of any of those? Motion carries. All right, the third is a proclamation recognizing annual amateur radio operators week.
I do, Commissioners, as you know, amateur radio operators provide some significant services in Elder County with response to emergency response in regards to emergency response, public events, and weather spotters. And if it's okay, I will read the proclamation. Recognition, recognition of the annual amateur radio week, June 22 through 26, 2021. Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves, and whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between peoples, societies, and countries by creating friendships and the sharing of ideas, and whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of community services, both in emergencies and to other local organizations throughout these decades. And whereas these amateur radio services have provided wholly uncompensated, and whereas Elder County also recognizes the services amateur radio provides to our many emergency response organizations, including the Office of Emergency Management, Sheriff's Department, Break Cross, Salvation Army, and others. And whereas those same individuals have thoroughly demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communication for local parades, blackathons, walkathons, fairs, and other charitable public events. And whereas the county recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these stands who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarming Program of the National Weather Service. And whereas the American Radio Relay League, ARRL, is the leading organization for amateur radio in the USA. Whereas ARRL's amateur radio field day will take place on June 26th and 27th, 2021, and is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise. It demonstrates radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Elder County Board of County Commissioners, and we do hereby officially recognize and designate June 20th to 26th as amateur radio week in Elder County.
Thank you, Sam. Take a motion to approve the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing annual amateur radio operators week.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion in second to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would just, in my experience with ham radio, actually, it was 1991 in Iraq, long before internet and cell phones. The amateur radio system actually supported tie-ins to local telephone services. You could get, you could stand in line for two hours to make a five-minute call home. It was greatly appreciated. That was, it started in the military radio system and then was pushed regionally to some station that was in the town that the person was from, that could then tie in to the radio. So it was kind of cool. But they still continue to do quite a bit, as the proclamation said. They're in our AOC whenever it's activated, and they're at most of our big events. So I do thank them. Any comments? Seeing none. All righty. Last item, I was there, a little off, we need to do or without, seeing a few of the members, Peter would like to indicate he'd be here, but I guess he's not. So, all right. We'll catch him at their next event.
Yeah.
Actually, the June sixth, we're invited to, so if we can get a couple of copies of the proclamation. There's a picture, and I'll see if we'll get that out to them for their, about the sixth, or the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Sounds good. All righty. Uh, next item we have up is approval of cul-de-sac agreements for County Road one fourteen and County Road one twenty. I know we've discussed this a couple of times. I guess the actual agreements are now ready, but these are roads that either dead-end or move into an area of private road where there's no county maintenance. And agreements have been made with property owners to provide appropriate land so we can put appropriate cul-de-sacs so the builders can get turned around and clean up the roads well without having to do a lot of vacuum or endangering fences. Rory, you're seeing a lot of nodding. If there's anything else you want to add to that? I do believe this is all being done at no cost to the county.
It's correct. No purchase of land cost, I'm sure. We'll bring in the rest. We were, we're basically abandoned, some right away, which is County Road one twenty, west of forty-five. But I, there was nothing in the, 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 in the national plan that identified that as a future east-west route. I don't know that we've ever had any plans to do anything with that anyway. Um, the other road is County Road one fourteen, east of seventeen twenty-one. Road and Bridge, Ken Denton in particular, who worked a little hard with the three property owners in particular, to try to get this. It's all, they just had a kind of good ability to have back trucks down the road that far enough. These roads are more than half a mile. So it, for safety purposes alone, it didn't make a whole lot of sense. So there was minimal maintenance done on these roads. Well, we still have an obligation to maintain, but part of that is make sure you put gravel down. So as you said, this gives us the ability to turn the equipment around safely without engaging staff or the general public.
And I, I can add some stuff to that, too. Rory is the Public Works Director. Kenz and myself, we've sat down and gone through the details on this, and it really does clean up some issues that especially for maintenance purposes, you know, public safety is definitely increased by these agreements. But it, it really allows the Road and Bridge Department what, what they need in these particular areas. And it's not executed yet, I don't believe, by the members of the public that we are entering into these agreements with the, uh, if you approve today upon, you know, their signature and notarization of, of these agreements, they will be effective and we can get started on the right way.
Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion to approve the agreements that were presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the cul-de-sac agreements for County Road one fourteen and one twenty as presented.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion in second to approve the cul-de-sac agreements for County Road one thirteen and one twenty. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All righty. Uh, next item I had, I related to it earlier, we've got an executive session to discuss a potential property acquisition for, um, Road and Bridge Shop. So that, I'd accept the motion to executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I hereby move that the Elver County Board of County Commissioners go into an executive session for the purpose of the discussion related to purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other property of interest pursuant to section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, paren, four, paren, A, of Colorado by statutes. Specifically, I move the Board of County Commissioners go into an executive session to discuss the acquiring of a property for future Road and Bridge site.
All righty. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and the three of us, County Manager, the Attorney, Bobby, and Rory, if you could, we're gonna meet in the County Manager's office briefly. So if you want to stay here, feel free. But probably be about five to ten minutes.
All right. We're back.
All right. The time is now ten ten, and the Board of County Commissioners will now come back out of the executive session. Uh, the participants at the executive session, Laura and myself, Commissioner Chris Richardson, Commissioner Rick Pettit, Commissioner Grant Thayer, County Manager Sam Albrecht, County Attorney Bart Greer, Public Works Director Rory Hale, Kyrie Zaid on the Public Works, and so is Director Bobby Shishre. That was, that was it. Okay. The board took no formal action in contravention of section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four of the Colorado by statutes, and no adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, or regulation took place. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not related to the motion to go into executive session during, occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the Colorado meetings law, I would ask that you state your concern for the record. Seeing no concerns, um, the agenda did call for possible action after discussion. Uh, we do have a motion to consider.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the County Manager the authority to acquire a property appropriate for the construction of a new Road and Bridge facility at a cost not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars plus any closing fee, any reasonable closing fees.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to grant the authority to acquire an appropriate property for a future Road and Bridge shop to the County Manager. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, Rory, you've indicated during executive session that there were some related issues not discussed in the executive session that you wanted to discuss publicly.
Thank you, sir Rory Hale, Director of Public Works. I think we've got to the point where time is of the essence, we're seeing construction costs, material costs significantly increasing. Uh, I think initially we were living at a interest rate anywhere from two percent, possibly lower, but since then, I've re-spoken to, what's her name?
Barb.
Municipal Capital, they, they worked with us before. Uh, the interest rate's already going up. We have an existing relationship with Wold Architects. They've built some things for the county in the past. I actually got them working on the drainage report for the site, getting homework on the traffic study. We're gonna lead those in order to go through the process for the access amendment on eighty-six. I don't believe there's gonna be any issue with that whatsoever. It's gonna take, I think, maybe a week or so to let everything out. Uh, as soon as this meeting's over, I'm gonna give Wold and Roy had to use to get the drainage report done, sent, copied, and contracted with Wold to the County Attorney for his review. I would like, if all possible, to try to get this on the next agenda. Again, and you know this, time is of the essence, but if the costs keep going up, we're gonna be shooting ourselves in the foot. Kyrie's made some adjustments based upon what, is it, are they actually bond canceled?
They're not.
Thank you, Kyrie Zaid, Public Works Administrator. What we would like is the approval to go ahead and proceed with our discussions with Municipal Capital as our placement agents to make sure we get the best rate we can. Um, they are on the rise, they do anticipate them plateauing, but they don't know when that point will be. Um, so if we can have the approval to go ahead and continue working with Barb and Mike, with Municipal Capital, who was our placement agent for the Justice Center, um, we can keep working through those, and, um, they, they will do all the groundwork for us for that capital bond, um, as far as bond council, sourcing the best rates for us, all of, all of that good information that, um, takes a lot, and time is of the essence, we get that good rate.
You had mentioned, just on the access piece, the project costs we projected already included somewhere to, to support access improvement.
I think it was roughly two, what, two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty, two hundred forty thousand for payment, and I think we're gonna be in the ballpark. We're gonna have to put a less bound left here, and you know that already. A lot of the seed up to look at is what the length has to be for the XL PSL legs each time. So, again, the rate, if we're successful in acquiring these, we're gonna have to correct. Yeah, I agree. I mean, if construction costs are going up and, and borrowing costs are going up, sooner is better to get this rolling if we can still continue to refine designs and if there's ways to continue to cut costs, that's great, but, but we probably ought to go after the capital we need to do this.
Yeah, yeah, so if that's, um, I'd take a motion just to give Road and Bridge the authority to continue working with, um, what was the name of the firm?
Municipal.
Municipal Capital, which I know we have an ongoing relationship with, so I'd take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve Road and Bridge, uh, working with Municipal Capital.
Second.
A motion in second to approve, um, Road and Bridge working with Municipal Capital. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Have a, please keep going on the loop.
Yep.
I know you will.
Thank you.
All righty. The next item we had was another, uh, executive session. This one is just the Commissioners, County Manager, County Attorney for an update on pending, and on the litigation.
Mr. Chairman, I hereby move that the Elver County Board of County Commissioners go into executive session with the County Attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions or issues pursuant to section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four B of the Colorado by statutes. Specifically, I move that the Board of County Commissioners go into executive session to discuss current legal issues or litigation.
Second.
We have a motion in second to go into executive session for the purpose of reviewing status of ongoing litigation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I turn to the County Manager's office.
Yes.
All right. Uh, the time is now ten forty-four, and the Board of County Commissioners will come out of the executive session, the participants in the executive session, Laura and myself, Commissioner Chris Richardson, Commissioner Rick Pettit, Commissioner Grant Thayer, County Manager Sam Albrecht, and County Attorney Bart Greer. Board took no formal action in contravention of section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four of the Colorado by statute, and no adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, or regulation took place. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of Colorado meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns somewhere. Seeing none. Uh, this is the last agenda, this is the last agenda I've had for this morning, so uh, there are no actions to take after that, this executive session. So with that, declare ourselves in recess. Oh, we have work out. All right, so next agenda. All right, we had, uh, the resolution that we discussed regarding Road and Bridge to take to action. Six minutes. Also, might please see some information regarding the capital financing of Road and Bridge shop.
Uh, I think we'll be good for the constitutional thing now.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I will, we'll take some final action on this constitutional. Okay.
Commissioners, we're gonna have a liquor license transfer publicating.
All right. Really?
No.
No?
Meadows Station, or Meadows Market.
Meadows Market.
Yeah.
All righty. I guess, uh, that is just going, so with that, I'll save our recesses at thirty-six. And we will reconvene at the egg building at the fairgrounds at one P M, zero, and six.